Okay, thank you Abby. Welcome everybody to our city council meeting tonight here in Kingsburg. Today is Wednesday, April 5th, 2023. Tonight's invocation will begin by Pastor Malcolm Light of Orchard Church, followed by the pledge of allegiance. Please stand.
Good evening, would you join me in prayer? Our Father and our God, we thank you again for the day that you have given to us today. We thank you for all the blessings that you bring into our lives. We thank you for the community of Kingsburg that you have allowed us the privilege of being able to be a part of, stewarding the resources towards, and Father of seeing it flourish and grow. Your word reminds us that as we need wisdom, we should come to the one who provides wisdom in abundance. That as we lead others, that we should pay very close attention to our flock. And your word tells us also, that it is not power we are to seek in leadership, but to be servants of all. And so Father, as we gather tonight to do the business of Kingsburg, and on behalf of the people and the residents and those that call Kingsburg home, would you indeed give us wisdom? Would you give us insight? And Father, would you make us servants? We pray this in the name of the Lord Jesus Christ. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I'd like to call this meeting to order. Abby, could you please take roll call?
Present.
Here.
Here. Next, we would like to approve the agenda. Action by the council to approve the agenda or to make modifications. Items that can be added to the agenda is constrained by state law.
Second.
Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Thank you. Presentations tonight, we have none. Public comment. This is time for any citizen to come forward and address the city council on any issue within its jurisdiction that is not listed on the agenda. A maximum of five minutes is allowed for each speaker. Is there anybody here tonight that would like to speak on public comment with items that are not on the agenda? Okay, please come forward and state your name if you're a resident of Kingsburg, please.
Good evening. My name is Frank Lewis, and I live on Eighteenth Avenue. And I've been in the city now for eight and a half years. And it seemed like the last couple of years, this Eighteenth Avenue got worse with trucks, speeding noise, sidewalks are bad. I fell off my wheelchair and nearly destroyed my leg. I got pictures of it. And now I see you guys are starting to fix the sidewalks. Because the sidewalks are like this. It don't match with each other. And it's all over the city. I'm not going to sit home and watch TV all day. I get in my wheelchair and ride around. And noise are really bad at night. As you get older, you don't sleep too well. And you hear the trucks all night. It's a common thing that's going on constantly. And there's loud music of these truck cars or whatever. I know you have one traffic cop, he only can do so much. They need more help to slow these people down. The speed limit is forty-five, this side of Sierra, it's thirty-five on this side. Well, I don't think any, there's very few people that drive thirty-five. Because I sit in the sidewalk in my wheelchair every day. No, I don't know what you guys can do about it, but that's my speech.
I got a clarifying question, if that's okay. You said on Eighteenth?
Eighteenth and Sierra.
Eighteenth and Sierra. And when you say trucks, you're talking about like big tractor trailers?
Yes, yes. And the bobdills. You come up with ninety-nine.
Right, all the prohibited trucks.
See, there used to be a sign off the freeway, over ninety-nine. Somebody took it down. Like the states in those trucks, but somebody took the sign down.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else here, here for public comment? No, okay, I have a closed public comment. Next, we have consent calendar. Items considered routine in nature are to be placed on consent calendar. They will be considered as one item and voted upon in one vote unless individual consideration is requested. Each vote in favor of consent calendar is considered and recorded as a separate affirmative vote in favor of each action listed. Approval of the consent calendar items include recital reading ordinances by titles only and adoption of recommended action contained in staff reports. Is there any council member that would like to pull an item on consent calendar? Nope. Anybody from the public want to pull a consent calendar item? No, okay. Then can I get a motion to approve consent?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any in post? Okay, thank you. Next, we have regular calendar. Six point one. Financial statement of the year ended June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. Consider statements as prepared by Price Paging Company, staff report by Finance Director Alma Colado, presentation by Alma Colado.
Good evening, Mayor Palomar and City Council. We are pleased to report that the city of Kingsburg financial statements for fiscal year ended June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two, have been audited by an independent accounting firm, and unqualified opinion has been issued. Highlights include general fund revenues exceeded expenditures by three point three million without including transfers in and out. Measure E fund revenues exceeded expenditures by four hundred ninety-two thousand. The ambulance fund had an operational deficit of one point six million. And this deficit was offset through inter-fund transfers, grants, and inter-governmental transfers for transportation patients. The water fund revenues exceeded expenses by a hundred and fifty-nine thousand. Disposal fund expenditures exceeded revenues by twenty-nine thousand. And included in this packet of the financial statements are the financial statements in the five-year mayor's fund, major fund comparison of revenues and expenses. The information provides a long-term financial summary and fund performance trends. Tonight, we have others, Osvaldo Gutierrez and Anthony Gonzalez from Price Paging Company, and they will be presenting our audited financial statements for the fiscal year ended June thirtieth, twenty-two.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Osvaldo Gutierrez. I'm an audit manager and CPA at Price Paging Company. And I have here with me Anthony Gonzalez. He's also a CPA and an audit supervisor, primary lead on the engagement. So some of you recognize us. I know there's some new members here tonight, so just brief overview. We are the external audit firm that conducts the annual city's audit. So we report directly to you. The city does a lot of work to get to this point, and it's an accumulation of, it's a yearly thing, so it's not a quick, just start and stop it, right? So there's a lot of work that goes into it, and obviously you have the attachment with you. There's a lot to go through, which we are not going to go page by page because it's, we'd be here all night. What's important is that we go through what we're going to talk about, and then if you have any questions, feel free to ask either of us. And Alma is also here to help facilitate in case we don't know something specific. So Price Paging Company here in, actually, we're out of Clovis. We do specialize in governmental and nonprofit auditing, so this is our bread and butter. We do have a process every year where we don't just come in blind to look at everything under the kitchen sink, because that would be ineffective. If we did a forensic audit or fraud audit, that means we would look at a hundred percent of everything, which is definitely not the case, because A, it's too expensive, and B, that's just statistically not how you're supposed to do it. So that's why we have to follow our standards. We do always update our understanding of what goes on at the city. Reviewing internal controls, interviewing staff, understanding new, you know, external factors. There's always new laws and things that are affecting accounting, things that are external, like COVID, right? Still resounding and affecting ARPA, right? There's new money. So for us, it's important for us to gather all that data to really put together a plan in place so for us to develop procedures that are going to be effective and useful for when we do our audits. We do emphasize a lot of our attention on a lot of the key areas that seem to be routine every year, but that's only because there, there's no way around it. So obviously cash and investments, we have to look at that. Revenues receivables and the related recognition for the various sources of funding, that's always a little tricky as well. The utility billings, the ambulance and fire services, payroll, salaries and related expenses. One of the bigger ones is always the net pension liability, GASB sixty-eight. That's a little, you know, complicated with how it came to be and how it's presented, but that's what we also have to take a look at. There's a new GASB pronouncement regarding how to treat leases. So that is something that's going to be more forward-facing and in-your-face, so you'll see that activity on the balance sheet this year, whereas in the past, it wasn't clearly shown. So every year, GASB always tries to make new laws and pronouncements that help clarify just what's happening, hence like the net pension liability. Back then, there wasn't a full-on line item on the balance sheet for that. So there had a, you know, we had to put it on because that's the law. Same for this, now they want to make leases like more transparent, I guess. And of course, single audit. So the city doesn't always receive large chunks of federal money that require a "single audit," quote-unquote. So that's why this only happens periodically. I forgot when the last time we did it, you remember? It was twenty... I don't remember, actually. It's been a few years, but bottom line is if the city expands over seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars of federal dollars, they're required to do what's called a "single audit." So it's a compliance audit. That is separate than a financial statement audit. So this year, for the first time in a few years, we've done it again. And that was primarily triggered because of the highway planning and the ARPA monies that came in, right? So primarily focused on that. So that will report on, no issues though. A separate, separate type of testing, separate type of compliance review. And up next, Anthony's going to go over some of the key points from the reports, and then we'll both be here to answer any questions.
All right, good evening, council. My name is Anthony Gonzalez. I was the in-charge auditor for the city of Kingsburg this year. So today, I'm just going to cover the three reports that we issued in relation to our audit. So the first one is actually on page one of this report. Maybe quite a few pages down past the introductory section. Yep, there it is, right there. Thank you. So this is our independent auditor's report over the financial statements, okay? And so this report describes some of the testing, some of the responsibilities that we have as auditors. But essentially, this is where we opine as to whether the financial statements are free from material misstatement, okay? So I'm pleased to report that the city of Kingsburg did receive an unmodified or a clean opinion. And so what, what does that mean? Well, it means that the audit was performed in accordance with applicable standards issued by the AICPA and performed in accordance with government auditing standards. It means that the financial statements are fairly presented in all material respects, and that significant accounting policies have been applied consistently, and that the estimates included within are reasonable. So Ozzy was talking about the net pension liability, that's an estimate, right? And so it takes into consideration mortality rates, investment growth. So we take a look at all those different inputs. Okay? So yeah, just to summarize, clean opinion, which is not an easy thing to accomplish. So props to Alma and her team. So the next report I want to touch on is actually not part of this financial statement. I don't know if we have it up, but it's the single audit. Okay, it's probably like... So the Government Audit Standards Report is a similar report. We're not actually providing an opinion on anything, but it describes the procedures we performed over the city's internal control process. So we don't provide an opinion as to whether, whether the control systems are designed appropriately or effectively, but if we notice deficiencies during our audit, we will report those to you. So we do have two deficiencies to report, each at different levels. One is a material weakness, which is something that could rise to a material error in the financial statements. And this was related to the reconciliation of the city's cash accounts to the related bank account balance. The next deficiency we noted during our audit was a significant deficiency, which is lesser in scope. It still warrants your attention, but it's not as significant as a material weakness. And this was related to fund balance reconciliations. So essentially, the opening number didn't match last year's ending number. So you can find the detail of these findings, I think, on the last page of the single audit report, page nine, and then the actual final page is management's responses. So I urge you to take a look at those. And then the last report is over compliance. So Ozzy was talking about the single audit report. We have to do a compliance audit over the federal expenditures. This year, we took a look at that. There was approximately four point one million of federal expenditures, and I'm also pleased to report that we had an unmodified opinion over compliance and no deficiencies in internal control. Lastly, the schedule of expenditures of federal awards is fairly stated in relation to the financial statements. So that wraps up the reports that we issued. I'm going to finish it up here with what we call required communications. They should also be included in the packet. I urge you to take a look at that. But some of the key points of this were related to what Ozzy spoke on regarding GASB eighty-seven. This changed a significant accounting policy that the city uses as it relates to leases. The significant estimates we noted in the financial statements included the net pension liability. This was also one of the more significant disclosures in the financial statements. We didn't encounter any difficulties in performing our audit, and the significant audit adjustments are actually attached to that report. Lastly, we didn't have any disagreements with management, and we are not aware of any fraud or illegal acts. So that's all I have. I do want to say thank you to Alma and her team for, you know, getting through this process with us and getting us the information that we need to be able to provide you with these opinions on the financial statements. So with that, I thank you for your time, and more than happy to answer any questions you may have.
Questions from council?
What was the amount of time that you spent on this audit?
It takes, like in terms of actual hours versus like when we start to when we finish?
Correct, we'll both, yep.
Hours, I'm not sure, but...
Three hundred-ish?
Yeah, I guess you can estimate about that, maybe around three hundred. I mean, we can get exact hours, but...
That's good, I'm just looking for...
Yeah. But it starts from summer through now. So that's why when we start the next one, it's always preliminarily in the early summer to another nine months. Or sooner, if everything is in line. But yeah, it can take a while.
You could say that you guys don't do a full financial audit, because that would be excessive.
A full, like forensic audit.
Forensic audit, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that is a straight-on, like every single invoice, every single receipt we would review, that would be, yeah, that's like a, only if you...
Do any municipalities do that, unless they're federally required or something?
They'll do it usually if there's like a request to do that. Like as an example, your sister city, City of Fresno, council's asking for a review of a lot of those expenditures, so that, whoever does that...
That's a scenario, yeah.
I'm just saying, they want a forensic, like detailed review of those transactions, and that's when they request it, yes.
Just making sure that we're kind of within the industry standards for...
Oh, yeah, do you want to talk about the differences between like a financial statement and ACFR?
Yeah, so what you guys are looking at is called an ACFR, an annual comprehensive financial report. And so this is kind of like the gold standard, so to speak, when it comes to governmental accounting. It's not required, it's kind of above and beyond what is normally done. In terms of the level of the test services, I would say that, yeah, you're within industry standard.
Yes, definitely.
So, thank you.
Any other questions? I have a question for Anthony. I didn't hear the term you use for deficiencies for the fund balance. What was that term again?
Significant deficiency.
Significant, okay, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. Do we have any questions from the public or public comment on this agenda item? No? Okay. Well, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Anthony.
Thank you to Alma and your team.
And Alma too, yes, thank you, Alma. Okay, so actioned...
Guess I could make the motion to accept the finding?
Yes.
Yeah, accept the finding statement.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? No. Okay, motion carries. Thank you. Six point two. Update solar options. Wells thirteen and sixteen, Police Department and Public Works Yard. Staff report by Public Work Director Daniel Galvez. Presentation by Daniel Galvez.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. City staff and SiteLogic staff are here today to give you an update on the progress of the solar options at Wells thirteen, sixteen, Police Department and Public Works Yard. Since our initial presentation in March, we have continued to develop the solar projects. We've had some, some changes done over at the Police Department in terms of locations of the solar panels and regarding the setback locations, which we've reviewed with the Building Department. We've looked at the Public Works Yard and determined which meter and which infrastructure we were looking to upgrade in regards to the design. And we also have made some changes over at thirteen in the initial proposed design, from a ground mount system to a solar carport to increase the amount of panels that are going up there. And SiteLogic will talk a little bit about it more specifically. But we also had a community meeting regarding Wells sixteen or the Erling Park Ponding Basin in their design. So we invited some community members to provide some input regarding that location. And the neighborhood and the participants to the meeting were adamantly against any type of solar, but they did provide some input in regards to a potential design. Our goal was to eventually get that design to them. For a quick review, unfortunately with the time constraints, we didn't get an opportunity to. But today, we are actually looking to just get your approval to submit the interconnection applications as we presented in the past. We are kind of facing an April fourteenth deadline to get the applications submitted. And like I said, well, we have some, some presentations to kind of show what those designs look like for your guys' consideration. So with that, we'll have SiteLogic come out and kind of give their presentation on kind of where we're at.
Mayor, members of the council, good to see you again. As Daniel mentioned, we've been hard at work trying to figure out a design that we think that the citizens of the Erling Park area will be okay with. And so I'm eager to show you what we've done. Oh yeah, that's perfect. No problem. You know, we've got the same PowerPoint as you've seen before, so we can probably skip through a lot of this stuff. You know who we are, who we've worked with, yeah, there we go. Okay, so this is Wells sixteen or Erling Park. And so I want to note that this design looks very much like a carport system, but it's not. It's shorter. So as you know, there are fences around this part of what we will call the turtle pond. And for lack of a better word, and I saw the turtles myself, and they're very cute. So this will not impact the happiness of the turtles in any way. The goal is to make this as least visible from above the fence line as possible. It is tilted so that the high side of this array is closest to the water, and the low side is closest to the fence line. We are working on renderings. We took pictures of all angles of this pond, so that any houses that live on any angle will have a view of what this will look like. We should have those for you in a couple of weeks. But this is kind of a mix between a ground mount system and a carport system. So think of a four-post structure, a little bit higher than a ground mount array, but definitely able to withstand any kind of being submerged in water for any period of time. Although we were reassured that the water line in this pond doesn't get much higher than it shows in this picture, because it will drain into the next pond when it does. So our original size, when we were first looking at the, the large designs that the community said, "No, thank you," to, those very large ones, that size was roughly two hundred and forty-three KW. This new size is a hundred and ninety-four KW. So we're not that far off. We're about forty-nine KW less than our original design. So there's still a significant amount of savings that is coming from this design, which is helpful, as Wells sixteen is a very large user of energy for you. Any questions on this design, or should we move on? Sure.
So you're saying that it's a hybrid that doesn't give me a height? How tall is it?
It'll be on the high end, six feet. So...
At our workshop, we talked about potentially putting a six-foot chain link fence where we have the slats, so that people looking at the park don't see solar.
Correct.
Are we still going to be with that?
Yes, that's, that's what we're shooting for, is a tie-in, be right at six. So you shouldn't be able to see it unless you're over six feet tall, of course.
From the ground level, right? So for standing on the sidewalk, looking over the fence, you shouldn't be seeing that solar array.
Now, from the north side, and you'll see this in the renderings, the fence line is actually lower. If you're looking from the north, I can't remember what street that is on the other side.
Skansen.
Skansen.
Correct.
So we have to figure out something there to block that. But we'll show some renderings and maybe have some ideas in the next meeting on how to block that deal.
Is there a reason why we raised it above ground mount to six feet?
It's, it's, it's the same as ground mount. I think the hybrid approach is that instead of just doing four-high panels, we actually went with six-high on the panels, so we have to do a little bit more of a robust structure. So the framing is like a carport, but it is a ground mount height.
I guess what I'm asking is, ground mount is not six feet tall?
Oh, on the high end, it is. On the low end, this is only eighteen inches off the ground. Yeah, so on the low end, it's eighteen, on the high end, it's six.
Okay.
When I'm looking at a Google Earth image, I'm seeing, and tell me if I'm wrong, all of the houses that we can see right here, that it's the back of the houses. It's not forward-facing there.
Correct.
And then the one across, did you say that's Skansen?
Skansen is north in that picture.
So on the other side, it looks like it is the side of the house and not the front. The, if you go across the street on this side, the house sits on the corner.
Yeah, if we're looking at these houses, this is their side yard.
Yeah, it's the side yard, and so...
The homes that are north of this, on the other front basin, that is their front yard.
But it's across...
It's quite a distance.
It's quite a distance.
It's across, it's across the second basin. And then over here is the water treatment on this side.
Right, and that's already slatted, that's already has slatted, chain link fence. You shouldn't be able to see it from that side at all.
And it's an alley? Is that an alley that runs behind it?
Yes. The foliage that you see on the right side of the pictures should do a pretty good job of obscuring the view of the solar panels. The biggest concern is the view looking north-south, right, from Skansen. One way to remedy that would be to raise the height of the fence. That's dividing the two ponds there. That's an option, but it's...
Well, are we planning on, I guess maybe this is not a question for you guys specifically, but if we're putting a chain link fence specifically around this solar structure, which was my understanding...
We don't need to, because it's, everything's already fenced in really well.
I know, I get that, but I think the reason we were doing that is to block the view of seeing solar. I think we were really doing it to mask the solar view. If we put a chain link fence around that backside of it, could we put a chain link fence higher and then put the privacy slats so that even the people north are not seeing solar at all? It shouldn't block the solar in any capacity. But just somebody standing on Skansen, looking out at the park. If we put some sort of shrubs or something against that fence, I want people to be able to stand at Skansen, look at the park, and see green space, not see solar in any capacity.
The slatted option fence along those two basins is definitely an option.
Yeah.
Right, it's just this one area here.
Yeah, if we could...
It's tough to see in this picture, but the fence slot right along here, it actually dips down quite a bit.
Right.
So you would have to raise the fence about four feet.
Cinder block.
So we can't point at a fence alone, so it's, raise the fence is one way, yeah.
There is an existing fence that divides those two ponds already. I think maybe getting a taller fence and then putting the slats in that chain link would serve that purpose that you're describing.
We can put the privacy slats, but I think eventually the goal would be to put some sort of shrubs or vines or something.
Or like cinder block, or something with... Or like cinder block or something with ivy on it.
Shrubs and vines would look nice, yeah. Um, so anyways, this is, this is the design. This is the, we're, we're trying to find the happy medium here. With energy production enough to help offset a significant portion of your well usage whilst also making sure that the public isn't losing the, the beauty of their park.
Would it be possible to kind of like pause here and do public comment? Cause I know we probably have people that are here specifically for that, this specific one.
Yeah, this one, yes. Come on up.
I'm Glenn Billington. I live at twenty-two forty-one Skansen. And, and that's, that is right across from my front yard. And I'm okay as long as we don't not put shrubs along that fence. If in ten, you know, if in five years I don't have any shrubs, I don't want to look at a green fence either. If we have shrubs across there, I'm good. And I appreciate the work that you guys are doing around the ponding basin right now. It's appreciated. Um, but if in, you know, three or four years, there's just a slatted fence there, I'm not gonna be happy. That's, that's my two cents.
I just wanna make, so you're saying with the fence, you wanna have actual.
I want shrubs.
Green.
Yeah.
I want some sort of.
I don't want a green slatted fence there.
And I agree, I agree.
Yeah.
I think we're all on the same page.
That's all I, that's all.
Alright, thank you.
My house is the one that faces that most directly. So I'd be the most impacted.
Thanks for coming to the workshop too.
Yeah.
You had a good turnout for that.
Anybody else here for public comment on this agenda item? Alright.
I'm Lance Jackson. I, I live on Skansen but further down. But, um, with this design, if they're going to raise the fence that separates the turtle pond from the lowest level of the, of the ponding basin. There's no way they can put shrubs there because it won't let water go across. In the event, now that, under that, that, the drainage that goes from turtle pond to the first level of the basin is adequate until it's not, which wa- wasn't two weeks ago. So if you put shrubbery there, you're gonna have a problem if you raise that existing fence. Plus it's not gonna be a four foot addition, it'll probably be about an eight foot addition because you gotta get to the height of that array. So if you're gonna have a fifteen foot prison fence.
What do you mean that it won't allow water? Can you explain what you mean?
Well, the water won't, the water has to pass over the, the, you know, where that turtle pond is. You have, there's a.
Concrete.
There's a concrete, uh, well, there's like a spillway and then there's also a, a culvert. But when it goes over, if it, if it, if there's more water than the spillway, than the culvert can handle, then it spills over the top. But if you have shrubbery there, it's not, it's gonna restrict the flow.
Restrict it, will prevent it though? I mean, I would think that.
It was, it'll slow it down. Well, how many levees broke because stuff plugged up the bridges? I mean, it's, so, eh, so that's, I, I mean, that would be, I think a fence directly behind the back of the array would be more efficient. It wouldn't, wouldn't be as tall. It would be hard to get, I don't know how they would, the logistics of getting it in the ground. But then you would have something, somewhere to put shrubbery that wasn't going to restrict any water flow. And I have one, how, how many rows of panels are those?
I believe that's either five or six. It's.
How did you keep six rows of panels at six feet?
It's only a five degree tilt.
Really?
Yeah.
That's really flat.
Yeah, it's really flat. It's how flat we do our carports. That's why it is a hybrid approach.
Okay, alright. How much efficiency do you think it is? Just curious. Alright, that's up, that's all I got.
Alright, thank you Lance.
Clarifying question on that. Are we talking about putting a fence around all four corners of that or sides? Or are we talking about only on three of the sides? We're talking about putting a fence in between the basins too?
So, so there's already existing fencing. Uh, some of the commentary that we got was on the east side of the basin, so. Along this area, uh, we did receive comments from the residents that they wanted to keep that access to be able to view the turtles. Uh, so that's an area that there's existing, uh, landscaping that, like I said, we would improve. But we're not looking to add or change significantly to, to the, the visuals there. Uh, the, the fence along this portion here, we could, we can add vines because the, the connection is through a pipe on the bottom. So the basin on the north of that is what takes the initial stormwater. Even after the storm that we got, we still didn't get water up on, on this end. I mean, it was. It, 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 very, I mean, it's, it's very little. Yeah, I, I mean, it, it's, it's something that rarely happens i- if anything. So like I said, the, the impact would be minimal, uh, to put any kind of vines on the, uh, north side of that fence.
Is there a reason why we couldn't put a fence right behind the panels? Yeah, I know it would be like a third of the way through.
So, I mean, you'd be in the pond. I mean, it, it's possible. Uh, I mean draining the pond is gonna be an issue. I mean, that area does stay with water. I mean, since I've been here, I don't think it's ever completely dried out, so it always has water. I mean.
Why we have turtles.
Yeah, yeah. So, I mean, it, it's something that we can explore and see what kind of options we have, you know, see how financially possible it is and what that costs is.
We know that for a day we don't have to come up with that decision.
Correct. Correct.
We're not gonna try and build a fence in the middle of taking floodwater. But I do wanna look at that as an option because I do think that's a way to kind of preserve the, most of the park that we came.
Okay.
And not have to build, you know, a prison fence.
No, definitely something we can take into consideration.
One other question. Where's the connection point?
Right to the left, yeah, just west, right where the well is.
Hi, I'm Teresa Lipschitz. When we, when I came a couple of weeks ago when we had that meeting, it was never mentioned that they were gonna be six feet tall. And I don't believe that, that it's gonna be able to be hidden at six feet tall. We were all under the impression that it was gonna be lower to the ground, not six feet. So you never mentioned how high the highest point was.
We, we hadn't been able to design that piece because that location was a new location that you guys suggested, so.
Right, right, but six feet tall is still pretty high. That's taller than the existing fence that's there.
About where the fence lines out.
The, the previous one was actually gonna be taller if I recall. Was it thirteen?
Thirteen feet.
Thirteen feet, the one that they presented that day.
Right.
Was actually thirteen feet. So this is, this is shorter.
It's still pretty tall though. I mean, we're still gonna see that over the fence.
It's like half of what was presented, but it's in a different area.
Eh, I don't think the neighbors are gonna be happy with that at all. I think they're gonna be, you know, once they hear that it's six feet, they're not gonna be happy. Just wanna let you know.
We weren't all able to be at the workshop. Not the whole council could be present. Um, but did they have input in deciding the height and, and where it's at? If you could kind of fill us in on some of that conversation?
Do you wanna?
Yeah, the goal we thought we understood and maybe we misunderstood was to have the high end of the panels be at the top of the fence line. So no taller than the top of the fence line. And so that's what we designed. It goes from right about eighteen inches to six feet. And that fence line there was measured right at six for the top of the fence. Um, we can maybe flatten it a little bit and lower it a little bit, but we don't wanna do too much flatter or lower. Um, any lower than eighteen inches on the low end and that becomes a wee issue. Um, so we maybe be able to drop it six inches, but it, our goal is to stable that fence line.
You know, to, to speak to that being out there, I will, I will say that I partially agree with you that as far as six foot was not brought up. That's, this is the first I've heard of that too. We were told ground mount.
Right.
Um, which we did believe ground mount was not six feet tall. Um, I don't know if that's just our, you know, our ignorance to the topic or not. That is very possible. But I know that it was very much presented that these panels will be hidden by a six foot fence. Like no two ways about that. You will not see the panels if you're standing in the street looking at the panels. You, you'll just see fence and.
Yeah, that's true.
I misunderstood that. That was the version that we were left.
And I think one of the other things, it's, since that meeting, they also walked the site and looked at it. And so looking at it on a piece of paper or looking at it through a fence and actually getting into the area and seeing where things are gonna go. I mean, sometimes we have to kind of make those changes and like I said, not, not close to being, I mean, it's, this is a proposed design. And it's still something that we can continue to kind of work on, taking additional input, uh, and then representing it out to the council for final approval.
So we're still capable of height modifications?
Yep.
We're just not gonna be capable of anything other, other than a ten percent variance of.
Twenty percent, sir.
Twenty.
Twenty percent.
And, and so this is a lot smaller than what was initially proposed. Um.
Yeah, initially it was like five hundred and twenty panels, right?
Panels difference? It was like fifty, some panels?
Uh, KW is really what we're focusing on here, but it's fifty KW smaller is the system than the original.
Right.
It's like a hundred panels.
To, yeah, to like, I mean, it is a much smaller s- panel system than what was initially proposed, so.
I just, I just think that the height is gonna be a concern. I, I do wanna just bring that up in the future that when we go to final design, the height is going to be a concern for people around there.
Yeah.
That's, that's, that's my big concern with the whole thing. I mean, I think if, if I heard the, the workshop correctly, it's one of those. We would prefer to not have this at all, but at the same time, I think that a hundred thousand dollars a year of city dollars is.
Yeah.
Too much to pass up. You know, as, as much as it's not perfect, I think we're all pretty financially reasonable with that. I just, if we're gonna do it, I would say the kind of our commitment needs to be that we're gonna do it in the least obtrusive way possible.
Absolutely.
So I, I have an idea. When we, when we put the renderings together, we can show you renderings with no shrubbery along the north fence. That's dividing the two ponds. And then we can also show you a rendering with some shrubbery, maybe alternating a medium sized tree with a lot of leafage, with shorter shrubs. So you're kind of obscuring the view both low and high. Um, and we can work on the height, um, on the low end, right? Try to drop it as much as we're able to, um, without endangering the panels themselves, right? So, um, yeah, we do have time to modify design. What we need council's permission on is to submit an interconnection application for this size, right? Like in kilowatt size of the array. Correct. Okay? If there are no more questions about well sixteen?
We have one more.
Oh, great.
My name's Larry. Uh, I've lived here, uh, the pleasure of living here almost thirty years. Uh, I don't live next to the area that I walk, uh, at least once a day, if not twice a day with my, uh, um, adorable golden doodle. Oh, but I have to, uh, say I'm, I'm really disappointed knowing how this city was founded. Uh, that I learned thirty years ago on why we moved here. That surrounding neighborhoods, people that, whether it's playing soccer, baseball, walking their dog. Uh, be at a half a mile, be at a mile radius, wasn't informed of the meeting that occurred two weeks ago. I heard about it through Facebook, through my wife on Friday morning, making reference to March sixteenth, the night before. And to me, that's very frustrating. To, to me, that's not very insightful on any of your parts. Uh, to, to inform other people because many people, uh, utilize that park. Eh, aesthetically, it's a beautiful park. And, you know, I'm not gonna hearsay and what I heard and, you know, I don't know all that. You know, whether it's gonna cost three point two million dollars and it's ninety-three thousand dollars a year, so what, what thirty years? You know, I, I, I don't know about all that. All I know is that, uh, uh, we've loved living here. We'll continue to live here until I go on to be with the Lord. But, uh, wow, really disappointed. And I, and I, I mean, I know I'm not the only one. It's just really sad. There's some people that are, work out of the area that couldn't be here, that are neighbors of mine. I live on Harold and have for thirty years, but just, just disappointed that you didn't inform more people. Good gosh, what, eight, ten, twelve people around? Many of us, I, I walk by there probably as much, if not more than anybody, uh, daily. So just disappointed. That's really all I had to say. Just disappointed.
Sir, can I ask a question?
Yes.
Um, what is your opinion on having this where it's at? So we can hear what you have to say.
I'm not an engineer, uh, but I can Google like anyone can and the fallout, uh, Cavnium and you can go on and on and on. I just feel there needs to be more research. I get the deadline. I get the money. I've worked for a corporation for over thirty years, traveled all over the United States. Um, I, I just think there needs to be more forethought. You know, the deadline's the fourteenth. We've gotta get this in. Wait, wait a minute. Haste, uh, yeah, in, in a way does obviously make waste. I think there needs to be, as it was prayed, wisdom, insight, understanding, knowledge about what in the world you're going to do, what you're doing. Not short term, long term. And, um, I just think there's not, there hasn't been enough time for people to, uh, research. And, uh, and I appreciate these two, um, fine people that are here. I did that sort of thing for thirty plus years. I, I was in sales, so I, so I get it. But really the, um, my concern is, I, I don't think a lot of, or enough, um, you know, input, knowledge, expressing back and forth. Uh, has been done over this for, for the people that live not in the immediate area, but really be at a half a mile radius. Uh, gosh, be a grand, you know, grandson, um, but like say soccer, there's just so many activities there that I don't think a lot of people realize. And, uh, I just think there needs to be more thought. Uh, it's gonna be here long after I'm gone, but, uh, I think there needs to be more thought and, and discussion, you know, uh, uh, uh. You know, wisdom pu- put forth, that, you know, this is why we're doing it. Uh, and this is, you know, the break even point and X amount of years and, and, uh, is there any ramifications? Healthwise? I don't know, but I just think there needs to be more time given this rather than just, I feel like it's being pushed through in such a short timeframe. Uh, I was, I, like I said, I, I wouldn't have known if my wife hadn't have shared it with me. And not that she shares everything and it was from another lady that was concerned that, that I read. And, uh, you know, the, the aspect of a basin, you know, it's a pond and, you know, the letter said, you know, or park. And so I, you know, I'd wanna get in all that. I just, I just came to listen and, and, uh, like I said, it's been an honor and a privilege to live here, uh, majority of my li- life. Great community. Love the community, but I just, I, I think there needs to be more, um, um, research done and, and maybe has done thus far.
So. I, I think that there is a very likely possibility that we're gonna have some sort of further conversation. All we're approving today is basically whether or not we're gonna connect something there. That's what we're approving today.
An application, just an application, yeah.
So there is gonna be more conversation, I believe, about the aesthetics and stuff like that. So moving forward, what would be the easiest way for us to reach out? Because I, I, and I'll tell you, I went door to door around the park literally and the neighbors can talk about, that's the only reason that we really found out. Because the timeline was really, it just pushed upon us. But in the future, what do you think is the easiest way for us to reach out? It's hard to reach out to a half mile with people individually. What suggestions would you have for us to better communicate that? Especially when we're in, when we're in a deadline.
Right, you, you know, and I'm not, you know, on Instagram or, or Twitter, obviously email, text, but if you don't have the phone numbers, I, um, I. I'd have to say door to door, you know, blitz the area. Uh, go door to door and blitz the area, knock on the doors. I mean, enough people come by my neighborhood knocking on the door that tried to sell me solar. Uh, and so, uh.
So make site logic, make site logic.
I've, 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 I've chosen not to and I've got my own personal reasons, uh, health wise. But, uh, yeah, I, I think that just blitz the area and, 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 uh, be professional and, and just, uh, knock on the door. And if nothing else, uh, leave a flyer, uh, telling of a date and a time that a meeting's going to occur. I mean, we receive that, uh, numerous times a week from different organizations and I think that would be a great way to do it. And forget, and, you know, go back to basics, get back, you know, forget the, uh, the, uh, the technology that, uh, that we have. But, and get back to basics and just knock on the door and, and if, if they're not there to, uh, verbally talk to. And even if they are, to be able to hand them something, eight and a half by eleven, one sheet of paper, like an overview and, you know, at this time. So we can go and just express our, uh, concerns, not that we're angry about anything, but we just need more information.
Maybe even some signs posted on the fence at the park. Because you said you walked there like twice a day. If you saw flyers even posted like on the fence, that probably would have been helpful to clue you in on something.
That's, you know, there again, for those who walk the perimeter and maybe there's not that many. But ultimately the fact that, you know, we're what, um, uh... what, um, uh, one, two, you know, maybe three, three blocks away, I'm, I'm just saying there's, but there again, you're telling me, which I didn't know, that, you know, in a, in a, it was presented quickly, and so you needed to address it ASAP, but I just thank you for your time.
Was it Larry?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, so, you realize that there's gonna be more workshops on this, on this, uh, solar panels, right?
Well, well, see, I, I didn't know, and I don't know, I just heard, you know, yeah.
So, tonight is only an application for SiteLogic to present to PG&E about, you know, for the solar panels. There's, it doesn't mean they're gonna go in, there's gonna be more workshops with the public and the neighbors in that area.
Oh, excellent.
So, you'll be able to come and, and, you know,
Excellent.
And speak on this, uh, item further, you know.
Oh, excellent, that's good, and there's some people I know that work for PG&E that would like to be here, but they're in the Bay Area, I, I mean, there's, you know, there's a lot of concern, you know, more than I realized.
But, yeah, so, we're, we're in a hurry to get the plans in by April fourteenth, or get the application in.
I understand.
But there will be more, another, at least, at least one more workshop.
Why, I understand.
So, we'll make sure that we, uh,
Please.
We'll get your information, try and get your information, and then send you an email, or put something, put some signs at the park where more citizens can come to the meeting, our next workshop.
Deeply appreciate it.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
For the workshops, can they put flyers out so we know better? Because it only works for amounts, so we need to come.
Yeah, and I have, everybody from the workshop, I have their email addresses too, and I'm gonna add them to it, and then we'll, we'll post it.
If we signed up with them, we'll, we'll get notification, okay, got it.
I meant to send out this flyer, but we didn't have the artist rendering, so we didn't get it out in time, or else we would have had it up.
Thank you for listening.
You're welcome, yeah.
I just had a quick question. So, we d- we downsized the, the program at Erling, or the project at Erling. Is there a way, this is a three-panel deep system, is that correct? It goes three panels?
Six.
Six panels deep? Is there a way to cut that in half and make two banks without a significant cost, and that would lower the height of the system?
Uh, because of the slope, we, we couldn't figure out a way yet. Uh, that doesn't mean we can't do some more engineering and figure it out. There is limited space, it's a pretty steep slope, and then you have the water there, so there's a limited amount of room. But we may be able to do one there and then one on the west side, but then it was starting to get into areas that was visible. Uh, all sorts of options we can still look at.
Okay.
Uh, but this one, we, we felt we can keep behind the fence, um, and blocked for the most part, except for that north view. And when we get those renderings done, and I apologize, it's, it's, it's taken a while, and we have two hundred of these that we're doing right now, so rendering's got put on, on the back burner a little bit, but in the next couple of weeks, when we get those renderings done and to you, so you can publish them, put them on the website or whatever, you'll see exactly what we're talking about, and then after that workshop, if we have to go back and do a minor change, we can do that as well.
Right, and just to, just to add to that, so the interconnection application will submit for a one hundred and ninety-four point four KW system, but you are able to decrease that by twenty percent with no i- issues to your interconnect app, so, uh, we, we could always decrease it, we don't want to, because of the savings, right? Um, but if that's, it's, if that's the citizens or the council's wish, we can, by, by twenty percent.
They click off the top row, for example. No, just down.
Oh, just down.
Only down, we can't go higher.
Yeah, can't go any higher, and, um, right now, uh, without an upgrade, so we actually did a PG&E analysis. Um, after we did our site visit, and we did some, actually, engineering calcs, we're maxed out at that site now for the infrastructure. And we don't wanna have to pay for a large upgrade from PG&E, so.
I see.
I think that's, that's, that's about as max as you can get right now. Anyway, yeah.
Are we still on track to be able, if, if we approve this, are we still gonna be on track to beat that M three?
Yes, yes, yes. You're good.
You're good.
You're good.
It's, we're ready to send.
Guaranteed.
Push a button. Push a button.
It's gonna be pushed tonight.
Right. Was there any more comment from the public?
Is any more public comment on this item? Or council discussion, council questions, or more discussion?
On this one specific?
Correct.
Yeah, that's, uh,
We have more.
Well, sixteen, yeah, there's more.
Um, I think I'll save my comments until after.
Okay.
Great, okay, we'll go to the next slide. PD, this has not changed, we've seen this before. Carport structures, uh, out front of the police department. Uh, again, this is the same as that you've seen before, there was no issues with these before, I'm assuming that we're, we're still there. Awesome. Okay, next slide, please. This is the one ha- has changed, this is well site thirteen. So, originally at well site thirteen, we had a ground-mounted system, and, uh, we were only able to, whoop, where'd my notes go? We were only able to add, I'm sorry, I'm not sure where my notes disappeared to, uh, but we had a much smaller array, uh, at well site thirteen, we were able to increase the KW size by taking it up off the ground in a carport structure. So, this is a taller carport structure, um, roughly thirteen feet high on the low end. Um, and so we were able to increase the, the KW size significantly to one hundred and five point eight KW. Um, this is giving you a lot more savings at this site, so.
We were using this site to make up the loss at the other site.
Correct, right, so. Next slide is, uh, Public Works Yard. This design also has not changed from the last council meeting. Okay, new program financials, this is a three-point-four-million-dollar project with an annual savings of one hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars. The city will be getting a one-million-dollar direct cash payment from the federal government as a result of building this project. That one million dollars will come to the city after the project has completed construction. Okay, and again, this is just our energy management services dashboard that will come with our project, and it will help the city staff and citizens, if you'd like to put this on your webpage, which a lot of our customers do, ma- monitor and measure the effectiveness of the solar arrays at each site, so that, that does help. Um, we can actually go back in historical data as well, so residents and staff and council can see what the city was paying at each site before, and now what you would be paying post-solar installation. All right, and this is where we are in our roadmap, uh, we still have a little ways to go before we're ready to break ground, but we are making progress. If you'll remember our last meeting about a month ago, we were, our star was at the, the, the road before. Uh, so we are making good progress, submitting interconnection applications is the number-one priority right now, uh, but we still have time to redesign and fine-tune and pick colors for the structure posts, if you want, at PD, and all, all the nice, fun things that come along with the solar project. And that is the end of our, our PowerPoint, we're, we're here to answer any other questions that you may have.
Questions from council?
Comments?
I have some comments.
Okay.
Do you wanna go straight to comments?
Well, hang on, do we have any, uh, questions from the public about any of the, any of the other sites for the solar panels? No, okay, yeah, go ahead, your comments.
First of all, thank you for SiteIQ, for putting this together, I know that we've went, you know, back and forth several times, and you guys have been more than gracious enough to entertain, you know, moving and repositioning, and so I do appreciate that. Um, I'm a big solar proponent, um, I put it on my ranches, my houses, I found value in it, I find value in it, um, especially as we're going forward in a city where, um, it continues to grow. I think the, um, you know, the draw on the infrastructure is gonna increase, uh, the wells will be busy with, um, you know, using energy more and more as we get more houses and more to development, and so I think that the program is a good program, um, and, um, I think it uh, is a savings not only to just the residents, um, in the areas or the districts where the solar panels are, but it's the benefit of everybody in the city. And I'm a proponent of that, and I, although it may not be a perfect scenario all of the time, I think that it's a very good, um, project for the entire city, and I'm a proponent of it. So, again, I would just wanna thank you, working with Daniel and Public Works, um, and for putting this, uh, package together for us to review, and, uh, that's all my comments.
Thank you, Dave. New comment?
Um, I have no concerns with anything else except sixteen. Um, sixteen, um, is in a shared district between council member Purcell and myself. Um, we've heard a lot from the constituents, and tonight also, and one of the things that, like, really sticks with me is, like, this is not how we do things in Kingsburg, like rushing to decisions, I know that we're kind of being pushed to make that decision. Um, it was last minute on us, as, as far as when we found out also, um, when we got our agenda. Um, I believe it was the Friday before the Wednesday meeting. Does not even give us a lot of time to get out and talk to a lot of people, other than who shows up at our meetings. Um, I struggle with setting a precedence of having solar panels at a pub- a public park, a neighborhood park. Um, that concerns me, and all of the uses, and, like, the beauty of that park and taking away from it. I know that if I lived anywhere around that park, I'd be sitting here, like, giving public comment, if I wasn't sitting up here too. Um, I struggle with that, I would really like to recommend as we move forward, that we do a separate motion for sixteen um, from the other ones, um, if we're gonna move on. But I understand the finances, the financial reasons, and in the long run, that will pay off with citizens also, but, like, today, right now, it's more about people. And so, I'm concerned about that decision with only sixteen. I really appreciate all your work, though, with our, um, community. Um, I know that you're, you said you have two hundred others that you're working on, you've spent a lot of time with ours.
Right, thank you, Laura. Any other public comment? Before we, uh, take action by council? No? Okay. Oh, go ahead, Daniel.
So, uh, yeah, like I said, recommendation today is that, uh, council authorized SiteLogic to submit an interconnection application as presented for well thirteen sixteen, police department and Public Works. Uh, you do have some options to not approve any of them, or to approve them individually, um, but they also provided some cash flow options, and I think one of the other aspect of it is, I mean, that is a preliminary cash flow, um, I think kind of the next step, as, as we kind of get deeper into the design, um, we'll be able to kind of figure out some of those construction costs and, and bring those back, um, either through the finance committee, and then back to council, um, and then also continue to have the community meetings for that, uh, design site. Uh, taking the input that we got today, taking the input that we've gotten at the initial community meeting, uh, to be able to kind of present that, and like I said, there's different options, whether it's banners, or actually putting some of this information, uh, onto the website, so it's more accessible, um, like I said, we, we have those options. Once the interconnection applications are approved, w- we do have a little bit more time to kind of focus on some of the details, um, and I think it'll slow down a little bit, the, like I said, the big push today is just to make sure that we, we have a spot in line. You, you're not committed, even after you approve the, the interconnection application, if you still decide, hey, sixteen's not the location for it, you, you guys still have that option without, and, and any penalty from SiteLogic, so, just kind of wanted to put that out there.
Two things, real quick, um, one, just for the people that are here, this is, again, not a final approval on this design for well sixteen.
Correct.
I think that is an important point, and two, for SiteLogic, those artist renderings were promised before this meeting. When we were at that workshop, we were told that we were gonna have more artist renderings before that, so, I'm gonna push you guys, I'm gonna keep pushing you guys to get us those, because that's what's really gonna matter for me, whether or not I ultimately approve any solar there at all. Because we're not at a point now where we are committed to this a hundred percent. We're, we're submitting for the connection stuff, like we need to, but as we talked about, we can always back out of this if it doesn't fit our needs. Because just like they're saying, we're rushing it, and they're right, we are, but that doesn't mean that we're gonna finalize it, just because we're rushing it, so I just wanna be very, very, very clear that there's still a lot of work to do at well sixteen, before we give final approval on anything.
Correct.
Sure, yes.
We reduced the number of panels there, can, what specifically is going to be our cost savings at well sixteen? Just from that one, can we break that out?
It's a hundred and eighty-six less panels.
I believe it was like seventy-eight percent of, it was gonna offset seventy-eight percent of the usage, uh, based on, on.
A dollar, a, about a dollar figure a year.
Wrapped around sixty, sixty-five, we, we're not fin- final on that analysis yet. Um, you know, we'll bring that back at the next meeting with the renderings, the final, you know, we're still on the beginning stage of those designs. Um, and once we finalize those, we'll get you all the numbers. All the, everything, the cash flow estimates now are all budgetary numbers, um, but we'll keep refining, keep refining, until we, uh, finalize those designs and costs for you. It, it'll be a couple of months before you're final, yeah, we have time.
Gotta get rid of some water first.
Thank you.
We're gonna take more water, and then we're gonna get rid of more water.
Yeah. Be filled soon. Okay, I think we're good, action by council.
I'd like to make the motion to proceed.
With the application?
Yes.
I'd like to ask, though, like I had mentioned before, that sixteen is a separate motion.
So, I think that with sixteen, I think that we need to include it, and the reason being that even if we include it today, if in three months from now, we decide, we've changed our mind completely on well sixteen, we can always pull out, we just can't add two. So, even if, if we have a separate one for sixteen, I think it might be causing a little bit of a problem with what we're doing with SiteLogic.
Tonight, yeah.
Because we have basically a thirty-something thousand-dollar retainer for the overall project. I wouldn't wanna kind of bifurcate and create another thirty thousand-dollar liability with something, with a separate contract, and maybe Alex, you can speak to that, but. Yeah, yeah, we work with you on that, but.
Yeah, I mean, I guess, what would, uh, Councilmember North, what would the separate discussion be for tonight's motion?
Um, because I'm gonna vote no against sixteen, and I want that to be on the record, but I'm for all the others. So, it's either gonna be a no for all of it from me, or just sixteen.
Well, you have a motion right now, so I think you need to consider that motion, or have some sort of friendly amendment.
I had asked earlier in my comments, though, if we could have a separate one before that motion was made.
On the staff report, I, I think you, you're able to consider them individually, I think, is, is an option, so. You gotta vote for each one.
I need to be difficult.
That's okay.
No, I, I think there's some point in why you're doing that. Um, I'm just, for, for sixteen, you wanting to remove sixteen as far as just the connection agreement, you're a no on the connection agreement?
I don't want sixteen to move forward.
Okay, I'll, I'll withdraw my motion, and then you can make your motion.
Okay, so I will, um, make a motion to, um, continue a solar array for um, well thirteen, police department and Public Works Yard.
So, can, yeah, we need a second, I have.
Or the motion.
Okay, can I get a second? Motionized, okay.
Now you can entertain a separate motion.
Now, we can have, I'll make a motion to move forward with the connection agreement for all sites.
And a second, can I get a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
No, okay. Uh, that's four to one, motion carries for the, and remember, it's just the applications. Laura, those are just for applications to submit to PG&E. Okay, a motion carries, we're mov- moving on. Six point three, thank you. Six point three. Independence Day celebration, Chamber of Con- Chamber of Comments Funding Request, Staff Report by City Manager Alex Henderson, Presentation by Alex Henderson.
Good evening, uh, Mr. Mayor, members of council, uh, historically, the, uh, Kingsburg Chamber of Commerce has organized, fundraised, and provided the necessary labor. Good evening, uh, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Uh, historically, the, uh, Kingsburg Chamber of Commerce has organized, fundraised and provided the necessary labor to conduct the annual Independence Day celebration. Uh, the celebration has been celebrated on July third for the past several years. Uh, and while the ancillary events, uh, activities for the event differ from year to year, the major component, the aerial fireworks are consistent. Uh, the, uh, celebration is historically the only festival or event that the chamber conducts that, uh, is not profitable or cost neutral without sponsorships or revenue generated from the event. Including new materials or income and ex- expense summaries that were provided by the Chamber of Commerce from twenty seventeen to twenty twenty-two. As outlined in our most recent agreement with the chamber, the city provides five thousand dollars annually for the Independence Day celebration. The chamber is asking the council to increase that amount to fifteen thousand dollars annually or ten thousand dollars additional. Staff and the Chamber of Commerce representatives provided information and answered questions about their request. For additional funding at the Finance Committee meeting on Monday, March twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three. Uh, costs for the celebration as provided by the chamber include, uh, the, um, the actual fireworks, uh, is provided by the vendor of, uh, thirty thousand dollars, fifty percent of which is due. Uh, pretty soon, uh, they asked for an extension pending this meeting. Uh, there's insurance and then, uh, sound expenses, uh, as well. Uh, revenues for the day of the event are limited to those who pay at a, uh, pay a gate charge to attend. Uh, given the nature of fireworks shows, most individuals view the fireworks for free at their homes, block parties, parks, uh, and other locations. Uh, in an effort to understand what other communities provide, staff reached out to Fresno County jurisdictions for their current arrangement with their respective chambers of commerce, and we have included those, uh, in your pack this evening. Uh, after reviewing the request, uh, the Finance Committee made a motion to approve the chamber's request. Uh, for one year this year, twenty twenty-three, with the condition that the chamber continues to seek addi- additional funding sources and/or partnerships. In addition, the Finance Committee recommends, uh, staff and the chamber review the existing agreement between the parties, uh, for necessary changes. Uh, there are members of, uh, the chamber, uh, in attendance this evening who are, uh, available to answer questions. And so staff is seeking direction from the council with regards to the approval of the additional ten thousand dollar funding request, uh, for twenty twenty-three. And in addition, uh, if the council has any additional feedback, uh, with regards to the existing contract between the city and the Chamber of Commerce. So that concludes my report, but I'm certainly happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Questions from council?
So I just, I guess this is for chamber probably more than you, Alex, but, um, Reggie, if you could like. Educate me on how much actual community outreach have you guys done or business outreach to like help with the cost of the fireworks?
Okay, so I, this year, we've, uh, we've done a little bit of surveying, uh, through social media and just talking with people to kind of figure out where. They land with the fireworks, whether it's having the show, not having the show, are they willing to help financially, volunteer wise, uh, with labor and whatnot. Uh, we got a very small response. It was about four hundred total responses out of, you know, thirteen hundred or thirteen thousand people here in town. So, uh, unfortunately, we didn't get a lot of feedback. Um, we have been. It, it gets difficult for us as a Chamber of Commerce because we have thirteen events throughout the year. Um, to continually go to the same businesses and people that we have in town to ask for donations. So, um, and we're finding it harder and harder as we go. This time of year, we're in the middle of, uh, fundraising for Car Show and Swedish Festival, so those are two of our biggest events that we have. Uh, so it's a little difficult to go in and ask for three different donations from the same people, so it, uh, they. For erring on the side of caution of not trying to beat up our poor donors that we, uh, go to on a regular basis. Uh, we've not asked too much on the, uh, Independence Day celebration side of it. Uh, but, uh, we have noticed a very significant decline for all of our events, not just the Fourth of July. On the ability to really get, um, substantial donations and fundraising for it. So I don't know if that answers your question or.
Yeah, I ju- I just didn't know how much like, how much the public knows that it's at risk of not happening if it doesn't have funding, right? I mean, everything takes money and this is one of those things that I find myself Iran as a, you know, preserving traditions here in Kingsburg, right? And this is one of them, but at the same time, we have to be fiscally responsible as well. And if, if we're gonna spend money on, you know, items, they really have to make sense for everyone.
Correct.
And so I don't know if the community knows that they're, that we're at risk of losing the fireworks show if it's not funded.
Correct.
And so that's why I asked how much community involvement has taken place because honestly, I'm, I'm a chamber member, recently chamber member, I run a business, but. And I know there are some, several others that haven't been, you know, um, addressed and said, hey, listen, we're at risk, what, can you please help? Can you donate? So I just, I asked the question because I think that if the community knew that we weren't gonna have it because of funding. I think that you would probably get some support or more support than you may have received thus far. That's just my own personal feeling, I've, I've been.
Sure. So, uh, in years past, uh, we've had this conversation, uh, mainly with the onset of COVID and everything being shut down. That was where we really had a good opportunity to communicate with the community on what makes this happen and, uh, how we pay for it. And I would say the community is generally aware, uh, of that. But there is a confusion that we've been fighting as the Chamber of Commerce for a long time, and I know. A lot of you see that too, sitting up here, that there's a confusion on the chamber and the city and what that relationship is there. And we get a lot of pushback of, well, why doesn't the city just pay for this? Because it's like, why isn't it budgeted? Well, the city doesn't pay for it, the chamber pays for it. And, uh, it'd be great if we could just budget this in there and know that the money's gonna be there because we depend on fundraising and membership dues and those kind of things too, so. Maybe to better answer your question is, there's been outreach, there's been conversations with people on where that comes from, but there is still. An overwhelming confusion as to where the chamber receives its money. And the, and the separation between the chamber and the city of Kingsburg. Uh, so that's probably one of the biggest, uh, hurdles that we face. When we go to ask people for money for these kind of things, like, hey, this event's not going to happen. Uh, if we don't get the fundraising that we need for it, then it gets turned into, well, why isn't the city just paying for it then? Because isn't this the city's event? No, it's not, it's the chamber's event, so.
May I ask how much money you have already allocated for the fireworks show?
So for the fireworks show, we have, every year, we try to carry over. Um, we, we, there's only two events that we do a year that we carry over funds year to year. It's fireworks show and band concerts. Uh, and that's to help ensure that we can make our deposits for the things we need to make. So we're, we're due a deposit yesterday, but we got an expect- extension on that, you know, so we can continue to have some conversations. But, uh, we carried over five thousand dollars from last year. Um, so we do have five thousand in the bank for Fourth of July. Uh, keeping in mind though, that we pulled about twenty thousand from general fund last year to fund the fireworks show. So really, we're fifteen thousand in the hole on the fireworks fund, if you look at it from a year to year, uh, standpoint, so. But we did, we did try to say that. So currently, we're at five thousand for the year that we have funds in hand, um, in the chamber. Uh, we've had some conversations with some other organizations. Uh, I know the Lions Club has, uh, agreed to, uh, donate, uh, ten thousand in matching funds. So they're expecting us to go out and find ten thousand and. Matching donation funds that we come up with. Outside of what the city's gonna give, exactly, yeah. So we, they, it's really, when we look at our total budget of about thirty-five thousand to put on the fireworks show. We have, we have the five thousand that we normally would get from the city, um, that's in our, our contract as it is. If the ten thousand comes through from the, uh, Lions Club and we're, I say, the, the ten thousand from the Lions Club would come through when we are able to raise the other ten thousand. That puts us right at about twenty-five thousand there. So that still leaves us ten thousand short. That's where the ask comes in for the extra ten thousand. And I, we discussed it with the Finance Committee, uh, and it really is just a, a one-time ask. We're not asking for this to be a thing every single year. Uh, we're hoping that through these conversations and getting a little better public, uh. View of it by standing here today and talking with you guys about it, hoping that our citizens are listening and, uh, paying attention to what's being said too. So they understand that this is in danger. It's one of the things in danger, uh, that next year, when we go into those conversations, we don't have to. Re-educate all over again where the funding actually comes from.
Okay. Two questions. Um, if this gets approved and the payment for thirty-five thousand dollars is sent to the fireworks vendors, we have bad weather due to wind, they cancel it, what happens financially?
I think we're only out the deposit and the deposit's a fifty percent upfront of the actual show, so the show.
Seventeen thousand.
So would, it'd be fifteen thousand. The show itself is thirty thousand. The five thousand on top of that is our insurance costs, our other, um, other expenses that the chamber has directly related to putting on that show. Um, that's where that part, so the show itself is only thirty thousand. Uh, the entire event is thirty-five. So our deposit that's due now is fifteen, so we'd be out the fifteen.
And I, I think along the lines of Councilmember Silva, uh, with fundraising, during COVID, you guys did crowdfunding.
We did.
And your numbers were incredibly successful. Have we gone down the road of crowdfunding for this year yet? And if not, why?
So we've, we've, uh, we've tried the GoFundMe, we tried it last year and we got very little response. Um, last year, we saw almost nothing on the, on the GoFundMe. Uh, I believe we got a hundred and fifty dollars off of it. Uh, so it wasn't as good as it was and we did the same processes again. Um, it was different last year because everything was open, right? The two years prior to that, we weren't allowed to have anybody congregate, so, uh, I think there was a little extra push that we had there. To encourage donations at that point. Now, people are looking at it as, well, charge admission, charge for parking, do all these kind of things. On our best year of charging admission, we got about ten thousand dollars on our best year. And our show has had to change significantly because of not only logistics, but, uh, with the high school and. Avoiding damage to the track that they have and the field and all that. There's not as much, there's not a ground show anymore. Uh, we can do lower level things, but, you know, so there's not as big of a draw for somebody to walk up to the gate and pay ten, ten dollars, five dollars, whatever it is to sit in there. When they can see the exact same thing for free in the parking lot or at their house or at the park. So that's, that's made it difficult, but going back to the, the crowdsourced funding of it. We're, last year, we, we didn't, we just didn't see the results. Even going around, we drove around in golf carts during the event with buckets and I think we came up with just over a thousand dollars. So that, that's why last year we took, uh, we took a really significant hit on this event.
So I, I don't think everybody understands how much work you guys do.
Mm-hmm.
Um, you know, until I was really associated with the chamber, I didn't understand how many man-hours are actually going into that.
You gotta stand here if you can talk.
But it's not only the charging of the entrance and the parking, we have to have people man those gates. And then we, if we do use, and the high school understandably has asked for lots more precautions because of their brand new track. So if we, if we were to use, uh, tarps that they've done in the past, we need people, those tarps are huge and heavy and the football field. We need someone to pu- put them out. We also need someone to take them, roll them up and put them back. So it's, it's not, there's a lot of options out there that, that we're more than welcome to, um, entertain. But then where's the manpower? We're a board of nine people and I'm not gonna unroll the tarp for the, for the track. So i- it's that kind of a conversation too. And like you say, I think it's, it's, we've been so fortunate in the last few years that we had private donors. We've had, um, lots of volunteers, but with COVID and just times changing, we're not getting the volunteers, we're not getting the funds. And we're really trying to navigate a whole new thing. Like Reggie says, this is one of the big events that we're not, that is not self-sufficient. And really, everything else with the chamber, the other events we do are able to, you know, make our own money on that. So like you say, education is one of it, but this is kind of a new year for us. It's only twenty-three, right? Twenty twenty really hit us hard, twenty twenty-one, it's like, this is really just the second year that we're trying to find a new way. And I, I really, I, I like that Reggie's saying it's just a one-time and then we can, um, you know, we never had to do a whole year of fundraising or six months of fundraising before. We just, we did, we were fortunate enough not to have to do that. This is kind of catching us a little off-guard. We're only a couple of months away. But definitely something that we can change going forward and have, you know, several people, including myself, dedicated to this for the whole year, not just. The couple of months before the event. So if that helps your decision at all.
It does, and I think that with that, you know, the amount of effort you're putting in.
Yeah.
I'll be honest, it wasn't noticed by me until I was more involved. And I think that if more people were involved, they would understand that. And with that being said, the city's tax dollars are really, really important to me. And so when we're talking about a ten thousand dollar ask, yes, we have it, yes, we can afford it. But I also do wanna know that the chamber is doing everything that they can. And I know that time-wise you are, but I have to ask these questions about crowdsourcing, crowdfunding. Are you going to be, uh, charging for parking? I know all of these things aren't gonna make you guys fifty thousand dollars on an event. The event is gonna be a loss. Every Fourth of July festival is a loss if you're not gonna charge for the bowl. But I just wanna know that we're doing everything we can fiscally to manage that money. Which, again, it is gonna take some man-hours if we do something like charge for parking. But, you know, if we're doing the crowdsourcing, I think it's showing that we're trying. And that also gives us a gauge up here for how much true public interest we have, uh, when we go forward. Because that's gonna be a conversation we're gonna have next year is, are we willing to spend this money? Is it worth it to the citizens? Are you willing for me to spend your ten thousand dollars for it to have fireworks?
Mm-hmm.
And we have time over the next year to have that conversation.
Right.
But I think that your efforts are gonna tell us a little bit of that, because if no one's giving you any money, no one's helping with the crowdfunding, maybe people don't care as much as I think they do. I think they really care.
Yeah.
But I just need to know that when I'm, when I'm, because I'm spending their dollars, I'm not spending mine.
Right, right.
And that helps me with that decision.
Right. Well, and also, um, I think we are the, the board and the committee, we are definitely considering charging. Even though in the past, we've thought maybe we shouldn't charge because there's no ground show, but you're still gonna get to sit in the bowl. You still get to be in the, uh, you know, in the football field, you're still close up. I think we're still gonna charge this year. We're, and we'll find, we, I'm committed, we're gonna find people that'll help us take the money from the entrance. What was it? There was one other conver- um, parking, I was told the police department doesn't want us to stop parking. Or stop the flow of traffic on Sierra entering this high school football, because that Sierra Street can't be blocked like that. So we'd have to find an alternative to getting parking money. I don't, they do at football games, right? I mean, that's what I, I don't know, do they?
So.
Everybody charges for parking, so we're trying to figure these things, we are.
As long as we know that you, that those efforts are, are really happening, that's what makes me feel more comfortable saying yes to things like that.
To clarify on the parking part, that was actually a direct request from Caltrans. That we not do that.
Not PPD, sorry.
Because we end up with, we have, for, for Fourth of July is a good example, there's probably five to six. Times as many cars that would come to that than would to a football game on Friday. Not that our football games aren't amazingly attended, you just don't have, you don't, you have the draw of Kingsburg to a football game. But when you have a Fourth of July event, you have the entire Central Valley sometimes that, that is part of that draw. So it does end up with a lot more traffic, but you know how traffic works, so. Yeah. Yeah, so, um, uh, to kind of, we did do, because I know we talked about this at the, uh, at the committee meeting. Part of it is looking at a little bit of the time analysis that goes into these things. Uh, we looked at last year and these are, these are best estimates. Uh, we are working on actually actively tracking all of our volunteer hours, um, going forward because it, it's good to know, um, obviously. But looking at, um, admin time versus volunteer time, so we do have two part-time employees with the chamber. Uh, for Independence Day, it's only about twenty hours of admin time, so it's not a, not a significant, uh, uh, hit on that side of it. But our volunteer time's about a hundred and twenty hours. Um, and that's just doing.
Day of?
Day, well, a little bit of meetings ahead of time, but it's, it's mostly day of and that's a simple show. We're not charging, we're not parking, we're not, it's, it's three or four people out there just, you know, kinda helping make sure that everything's taken care of. But then, um, the big part of it is to clean up the next day.
Next day on the fourth.
That's a lot. That's a lot of time and it's the Fourth of July. Nobody wants to show up at six o'clock in the morning before it gets hot and sit there and rake and sweep up all the, the frag from the fireworks, but. And clean bleachers. But wh- when you look at that, it, it's a very small drop in the bucket of a hundred and twenty hours when our total volunteer hours are well over four thousand for the year. So. It's, it's a full, we, we basically have a full-time job that's fulfilled by our volunteers. Um, from a logistics standpoint, and that's our, that's probably a very low-end estimate of the time. So, uh, there's a lot of time that goes into it and it's not that we aren't willing to put in the time. It's that there's a lot of, as a chamber, we have many, many events up, uh, and things that have to go on. And we still have to, you know, operate as a Chamber of Commerce too, uh, in addition to putting on the events. So.
Thank you, Reggie. Do you have pub- public comment on this agenda item? Go ahead, Lance.
Well, um, first of all, I'm, I am absolutely not opposed to the fireworks show. Um, I'm not opposed to the city providing funds as agreed to on the service agreement for the fireworks show. That's fine. I understand too, we got costs. I mean, costs are going up exponentially everywhere. So yeah, I can see that, I mean, bumping it is, I mean, makes perfect sense. But from a fiscal standpoint, I just, I have, I, I, I take issue with the city blindly providing funds without a full and complete accounting of what's going on at the chamber. Um, we give the chamber money. We don't know, I, I didn't know before I found that, uh, resolution, the agreement, basically the operating agreement that says, this is what the chamber will do, this is what the city will do. And this is what the city's gonna pay the chamber to do it. Before I saw that, I, I mean, I was just like what people were saying. You don't know what, what is the division between the chamber and the city? And if the city's giving the chamber money, which we are, then we should demand some straightforward, clear accountability as the operating agreement calls for.
So I will say the liaison, who was council member north, it wasn't me for the last two years, at every chamber meeting, they do provide us, um, both their current budget, their current accounts and, uh, all of their financial data that we ask for at every.
Okay. No, that's great. That's great. Uh, uh, and, and, and where can I find that as a, as a taxpayer?
On Tuesday morning, um, at seven o'clock next.
Okay. So, so I, okay. So we can, so we can get a full and complete accounting of what's, where, where, where the city's money, cause I couldn't even find the city's disbursement within the budget. Or within what, what, uh, price paging company prepared. There wasn't any line item in, in their information that said Chamber of Commerce. So it, I, and in the, in the expenditures. Not, not that I'm against, I'm not against the Chamber of Commerce. I'm, 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 I just, we, we have to have accountability. And, and it just, it, it comes across like we have none right now. We're just throw, we're just throwing money. I mean, the, the this fifty thousand dollars out of the general fund at the close of fiscal year twenty-two. Well, I, I don't, I don't expect that the chamber to be running for a profit because they're providing services, but I'd like to know where the fifty thousand dollars went. You know, that's.
I think that your, your best bet for getting that information is at specifically at their meetings.
Okay. And, um, well, anyway, that was, I mean, that was my, my main point, but, but I, I, believe me, I think the fireworks show is great. It's like David was saying, it's a, it's a tradition. It would be, hopefully there's public interest and I absolutely agree with you saying that they must absolutely exhaust all outside resources before, before coming to the city because a one-time ask becomes a two-time ask, becomes a budget line item. So, anyway, thank you.
Thank you, Lance. Any other public comment? Okay. Any more council discussion?
I, I'd like to make the comment.
Okay.
Along this, along the lines of financial responsibility, I really do think you need to be charging at the gate. Like you said, on your best year, you've made ten thousand dollars, but that's what you're asking us for. That's what you're asking the taxpayers for. And a lot of people are coming from other communities. So the taxpayers in Kingsburg are funding, if you're not charging them, a free show. So I think at a minimum, I would like to see you guys charging at the gate. But I just want you to be charging for parking because the high school does for football games. The, the cars are gonna come whether you're charging for parking or not. Um, and you do, you have a lot of people that are gonna go and sit in the, in the parking lot watching. That are coming from other communities and enjoying the free show that the taxpayers here are funding. So I, I, my ask to you, that you do both. There are roughly three hundred parking lots, music boosters, um, takes care of the parking for the football game. They make about fifteen hundred a night and that's at five dollars. You know, this is, you can't, you can't do the fair without, you know, paying for parking. You can't go anywhere without paying for parking. I think we, I would, I would appreciate that as, uh, from a fiscal position. You know, I'm, I'm supportive of giving you the money, but then you'd have the money for the, um, the deposit next year. So that, that's just, that would be my, my.
I think we can definitely work on that and work on the logistics of getting the cars in there with payment without blocking Sierra Street. I think there's a, obviously there is a way to do it.
Thank you, Stacy.
Additionally, um, maybe you can talk to the bid also about having additional volunteers. Maybe to help because, um, adding the parking's going to add a need for volunteers. Um, and maybe even asking public can do like, uh, the calendar scheduling that you can send out where people can sign up for that and and they'll sign off on some community service hours for some high school students or something like that. Um, that are going to summer school or I don't know. Um, but I do agree we need to, that's a good point, being responsible. Because that was ten thousand that you mentioned and that is what you're asking. I do also want to piggyback on, um, Mayor Protem Purcell's comments that, uh, I don't know that the public realizes all of the work that the chamber does for our community. Every festival, everything are these nine board members doing all those volunteer hours. And I will tell you that it's been amazing. I mean, the car show and what we've seen, like during the pandemic and after and the growth in that, it's becoming, um, like a destination for people to come to our festivals and, um, we noticed. Thank you for all of that.
Thank you, Laura. Okay. Action by council.
I'll make the motion to provide the additional funding for the chamber.
A second.
All in favor? Any opposed? No? Okay. Thank you. Motion carries. Six point four. Twenty twenty-three through twenty twenty-eight, city str- strategic planning consultant proposal. Staff report by ci- uh, Assistant City Manager Christina Windover. Presentation by Christina Windover.
Thank you, Mayor Palomar, and good evening, council. Thank you for my time. Um, so the city of Kingsburg has a strategic plan. That's a five-year document. It's currently contained in the city's budget, um, and it also guides our operations as a city. Uh, the strategic plan contains the city's vision, values, mission statement and six strategic goals. Um, it's based on the input of residents, business owners, staff and council members who were serving back in twenty eighteen. Uh, to plan and prepare for the future, staff met with two well-known firms um, over the last couple of months that offer strategic planning services. Um, to update our current strategic plan, uh, for the next five years. Both firms have extensive experience and offer their own, um, unique processes for conducting the strategic plan process. Um, one of them is approximately twenty-four thousand seven hundred dollars. And then the other proposal is, um, about double that at forty-eight thousand nine hundred and seventy-five dollars. Uh, given the discrepancy in those two proposals, staff is recommending that we go with the first group, which is the Miho Rando Group. Um, included in your packet, there were samples from both firms. I think they both look very nice, but we've included them in case you have any preferences or things like that. Um, and like I said, we are recommending going with the Miho Rando Group and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions? Go ahead, Dave.
Okay, Christina, um, the Miho Rando Group has, have we worked with that group before in the past?
No, we haven't.
Okay. Have, has anyone reached out to like, cause I saw they have had a list, a very long list of cities that they have worked with. Have we reached out to any of those cities to get their, um, input on, um, how well they do the Miho Rando Group?
We haven't directly reached out to the communities in terms of how they worked with them. But they did send over, um, several samples. So I've included one sample in your packet, but they sent over about five or six samples and those samples differed in terms of the kind of products that they um, created. So we've had to, had a chance to see what, what they do.
Any other questions from council? Public? Questions or comments from the public on this agenda item? No? Okay. No more comments from council? Uh, action by council?
Like the recommendation to hire staff's recommended group.
Miho Rando, yeah. Can I get a second? All in favor? Any opposed? No? Okay. Thank you, Christina. Next, six point five, twenty twenty-three summer recreation program fee discussion. Staff report by Community Service Director Adam Castaneda. Report by Adam Castaneda.
Well, good evening, Mayor and members of council. Um, so tonight's presentation is, uh, on our summer rec program that we'll be hosting. Um, it's, uh, goes along the lines with, uh, adjusting the master fee schedule, um, uh, to change to, to the current program. So the city of Kingsburg Summer Recreation Program fees, um, need to be adjusted in the master fee schedule uh, to accurately reflect, uh, current rates and cover the rising costs associated with the program. Uh, the summer rec program's financial structure is fee-based. Um, and so, um, it does rely on the program participant contributions, um, so that it doesn't get subsidized by any other funding. Um, in two thousand nineteen, this was brought to council, um, to approve an adjustment to the fee schedule. Um, and with that adjustment came a breakdown of the summer rec program. So historically, it used to just be an afternoon program. Um, but the city saw a need for different options over the summer. So that was broken down to a morning program, an all-day program, an afternoon program. And all these options were available from time to time, um, just depending on what was available by location and by staff, um, to host these sites. Um, so with having all those different options, it just gave the city flexibility, um, in, in how the program was run over the summer. Um, so this year we have, um, a different opportunity to run the summer rec program. Um, historically, it's always been at an elementary school site. Um, but we've got word from the district that school sites are gonna do a lot of, um, uh, renovations and remodeling at their sites. Um, they also have their own summer program that they're gonna be offering, um, which will be a full-day program. Um, and so it just took the city to find an alternate site for it. And the high school is willing to partner with the city for the program, but they also run a summer, uh, summer school. Um, and so we want to kind of minimize the interaction between the high school students and our rec students. So we figure the best option is going to be, you know, a partial afternoon program for the summer, um, at the high school. And, um, so with that, it kind of, it brought up an issue because in, in the master fee schedule as it's currently stated, um, and you can scroll to, uh, one more. Thank you. So it, it goes down to what the master fee schedule has currently stated for the afternoon portion only. Um, and that's a hundred and thirty dollars a month per student, um, or per participant for the program. So if I leave that rate the same at a hundred and thirty dollars, uh, for the afternoon portion, it, it doesn't equate to what it costs us to run the program. Um, and because it's fee-based and we don't wanna rely on any other funding, um, I need to just adjust those numbers. So if I leave it as is, it's about sixteen thousand dollars deficit, um, for the program. And so what I'd like to do is adjust that on the master fee schedule to reflect what essentially would cost us for us to run the program over the summer, um, which is two hundred and thirty dollars. Um, after running the formula for this, um, and, and realizing that the program is per participant seat and not necessarily by hour. Um, so it would take this number of participants in the program for us to run these numbers. Um, so if you, you'll notice for the all-day program, it's, it's not very much difference in price. So it's for all day, it's two hundred and seventy-six dollars for an all-day program. That's from eight to five thirty. Um, the afternoon program is two hundred and thirty dollars a month. So there's not that much of a difference. Um, but again, it's because it's per seat, not per, not per hour to run the program. Um, so anyways, with that, I, I hope that makes sense. Um, I, the, these are again, just the numbers that reflect, um, what we would currently be at if we left it at the, at the one thirty. Just scroll down a little bit more. So the negative sixteen, four ninety-five, um, if I do bump it up to the two thirty, which is the current rate from last year, um, then we would essentially kind of cover all costs for the program. Um, and if you scroll, I think one more time? Down, yes. And so this gives you just an, an overall comparison of, um, three other programs, um, that are offered in the city. So we are still considered a lower rate program. Um, so it is affordable to, you know, more affordable. Um, in some of its competing programs, um, which comes out to about two dollars and thirty cents an hour for care over the summer.
I'll just add though, um, the Kingsburg one that is free does not offer that late of care. You would be helping to fill in a gap there.
Oh, okay. Cause your program's only. To have four thirty, okay. All right. So anyways, with that, that concludes my report. I'd like to just adjust the, the master fee schedule so that we can accurately capture the expenses and, uh, um, operational costs for, for this program, um, over the summer. And I'm happy to answer any questions you might have. Correct. For this summer. So this will still allow us the flexibility to offer different programs as years progress and more opportunities, obviously partnering back with the school district in following summers or getting a new recreation center. All those would still be flexible within, within the fee, the fee structure.
And it's, and the location is the high school this year?
Correct. It will be at the high school.
There's no mornings because of the summer school?
Correct. We just wanna min- we just wanna minimize the, the interaction between high school students. Uh, we do use, we do have shared sites, um, out on campus. And so if we can, you know, kind of minimize that, we've worked with, uh, the superintendent of the school. Um, and we both felt that this is just a, an agreeable, uh, arrangement. So.
How about when, um, summer school ends?
We, yes, cor- so we would still be, so summer school ends, I believe, the second week in July. So we would. To the end of June. Okay. So with my understanding was, it was with beginning of July, sometime around there. So we'd still offer our program because that would be the structure of it. Um, for this summer. So it wouldn't change, um, any of the, the staff hours that are needed to operate and obviously scheduling for the month of July. Um, so that would stay the same. Um, but we would be the only ones on, on campus.
So it's still be afternoon?
Correct.
Any other comments, question, council?
The only question I had is when we're increasing the overall sixteen dollars or so, it sounds like, who's really gonna be the ones actually paying for that? Like I see student costs, but is that, that's not students paying for that. Who's actually paying for that?
Parents. For the, you're, you're like per, per participant? Correct. Yep. And it's a per-month cost. So that would be the, the two thirties per month.
Since January, the district did fund the program. So parents didn't have to pay since January.
Correct, correct.
Through June, um, due to construction going on at, um, all campuses except for two. Through June, um, due to construction going on at, um, all campuses except for two. And those two campuses, the district is running the programs at.
Yeah, oh, yeah, that's true.
I'm running the programs.
Laura, you can, you can blame Councilmember North.
That they're, the space that they would be at, at Washington does not allow them the use of the cafeteria, so they couldn't feed the kids there, so.
Correct.
Based on that, um, they decided to end the contract early, which is.
Correct, June first.
Instead of June thirtieth with the district paying for it, because they would need to move off-site, because they'd need to be able to feed the kids. And you're gonna access the high school.
Correct, and so it, it, it isn't a nicer arrangement this summer, partnering with the high school, because they do offer their own food program over the summer, so we can piggyback off of their program. So the program will essentially start at eleven thirty, um, to take advantage of their free program for feeding the students. Um, and then we also utilize the pool every day. Um, so instead of paying for transportation or getting the kids to and from Washington to the high school, we're already on-site. So we're alleviating a lot of that transportation cost, um, and just staff time of getting them to and from, so.
Saving on transportation and food?
Uh, food was free for E O C was provided, uh, transportation was, I believe it was twenty-five cents a student, um, for the transit. So it wasn't, wasn't substantial, but staff time to take us to walk them to and from was, was an issue.
No more questions? How about from the public? Anybody want to speak on this agenda item? Okay. Then action by council.
I'll make the motion to update the fee schedule.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, any opposed? No? Okay, motion carries. Thank you, Adam. Council reports and staff communications, seven point one, community service, we did not meet last month. Seven point two, public safety committee, we meet next month. Seven point three, Chamber of Commerce.
Next Tuesday at seven is when we meet.
Okay.
I got that.
Seven point four, economic development.
We have not met.
Seven point five, Finance Committee.
Have not met.
Seven point six, Planning Commission, we did not meet last month either, we're gonna meet in April, I'm, or, no, this month. We'll meet later on this month. Seven seven, South Kings G S A.
We did meet, and, um, we discussed, uh, floodwater, of course. Big, big item on everybody's list, and so, um, they discuss cities, um, being ready to accept that floodwater, the district ready to deliver it. Um, there is one basin in Sanger that, um, they're in negotiations with the, uh, landowner to create a new basin for recharge, and so that's pending, um, other than that, no new business. Yes?
How many, how many of our basins, how many of the basins within the city are capable of accepting floodwater?
So I wish Daniel was here, but. Three. Three? Three. Three, and they're currently taking water now. Uh, the historical park, the historical park basin, uh, the Athwell Park basin, and the basin that's just north of Solig.
Do you have, any idea how many acreage that is?
I, I don't, I can get that, I don't remember that off the top of my head. Depends upon how, obviously, how long they're running water.
This, and the floodwater, now the floodwater that's, uh, the floodwater release though is, is not considered part of the city's out, the city's allocation. So, I mean, the, what CID's obligated to deliver?
It is.
Oh, it is part of the, okay, so is the city paying for it?
Yeah.
I mean, the city, so the city's paying for the floodwater release, not, not, this would be like a normal, I mean, because the floodwater's different than normal irrigation water. Normal release water, so.
Yeah. Yeah, so they're, they're required to deliver to us a certain amount each year that we pay for, so if that occurs through.
But is that, so this is part of that?
Yeah.
Floodwater releases typically are not, I mean.
Extra, it's like extra.
Different, because they're looking for places to put the water, and so I didn't know if that was, you know, a lot, in a lot of farming operations or not. CID, but others, when they're, they basically give away floodwater.
Sure.
So I just didn't know if that would be, be an SKGSA handle or a C I D.
Yeah, so Phil's, or, or CID's required to, uh, give us our allotment, so, uh, once we reach that point, if there's additional floodwater that they're still running, we would continue to take that, but he would count this water as the amount that he's required to provide to us.
Right, right. Seven point eight, downtown business improvement district.
We met on Tuesday morning, and the main items that were discussed is, um, the event on June second that they're, um, gonna partner with the chamber on, so they're gonna do, uh, um, country line dancing, and they just had to make some adjustments, um, with Adam to the applications for that, and they're gonna do the Kingsburg Street Beats, um, combined, so the two, the two groups are gonna work together. It's also the first official day of summer vacation, so like summer kickoff. And so that's Friday on the second, which is like two, two days, or the day after graduation, something like that. And then they, um, hired a social media manager. It's taken quite a bit of time for them to get, um, applicants that met all the criteria. And so, um, it's O and Oaks, and I can't remember the gentleman's name, but he is a, a marine veteran, and he did public relations for the military, so he's very skilled at all that, and I think he moved here in September? Quinn? Quinn.
Thank you. Seven point nine, council of governments.
Um, let me pause that real quick and go back. I, I did make a mistake with the Finance Committee, we didn't.
Okay, yeah, okay.
The things we went over were what went over today, the fu- the, uh, financial strategy and the chamber were the two topics that we went over, that were brought forward with the council today, so I just wanted to clean that up. Uh, for council of governments, we did meet. The biggest thing pert- pertaining to the city is gonna actually be regarding Highway ninety-nine. They are going to be closing down ninety-nine south initially, uh, at Floral, and they're gonna try and divert all traffic to Mountain View. Um, that's gonna be for months, and then as soon as they finish that, they're gonna switch over to the opposite side and still try and divert traffic, uh, to Mountain View. So that is gonna be incredibly problematic.
On ninety-nine not Golden State?
Highway ninety-nine.
What are they doing now?
They're, they're just continuing their project, and so they're gonna be, they're gonna be reducing it down as much as they can and encouraging everything to divert, um, and that's gonna be months.
Does that start, Brendan?
Four nineteen.
Four nineteen, wow, okay.
Uh, I'm sorry, I, I should, I might have misspoke, they're not completely shutting down ninety-nine, uh, on ramps and off ramps. So, they're gonna be reducing, they're gonna be reducing the lanes, and they're gonna be pushing everything.
Wow, still not good.
Yeah, no, it's, it's still gonna be bad, because that's, that's gonna give us significant problems on, on Mountain, Mountain View's gonna be incredibly backed up, is what's gonna happen, because everybody that's trying to get the Salma is gonna be taking, trying to take Mountain View over to forty-three, and it's gonna be a disaster, so.
Alright, thank you, Brendan. Seven point ten, council member reports.
I had two items.
Okay.
One, Tri-County Health, um, had a special meeting that I attended as the new liaison, and, um, it was, uh, very informative, but basically, they wanted to meet to discuss the new Tri-County Health, um, twenty-four-hour urgent care that's going in in the business park, so, um, and the funding for that. So, um, they did, um, tentatively approved the, I guess, they approved the tentative budget that they presented. And so, um, that was the only item that was on the agenda, but I did participate in that. Um, additionally, um, under council member reports, I don't know how many people know, but I'm sure Laura knows, but Chad Bennett passed away, and they had his memorial at the high school. And I attended that, and for a lot of you that may or may not know Chad, he was a, um, a, a pillar in the community, he's a teacher and educator, um, a husband, a, a great man. I met him when my daughter played soccer and went to school at Rayford Johnson, and then he literally came up and was at the soccer game, and introduced himself, and he's like, yeah, I just came to check stuff out, I'm a teacher. He watched, and Kylie was in his class, and I, unbeknownst to me, but he was that kind of man that he would take the time to go visit and, and do things that were not in his job description, right? And so it was very heartfelt for me, because I, I know him, I knew him, and it was a very nice service, and it was, um, well-attended, which just says what a great community that we live in, and how much educators are appreciated and, and good people are appreciated. So, um, I was fortunate enough to attend that, and it was a very good ceremony and, uh, remembrance of Chad. And so, that's all I had.
Yeah, to piggyback off of that, um, I knew Chad very well. I, I was unable to go to his memorial service, but he and I coached soccer together when, his daughter and my daughter Victoria, they're both twenty-one now, but they were the same age when they were in kindergarten. And they went to all, went to school all through their, their lives together, and we coached soccer together. And, um, I remember my first year on council, he was, uh, at the chamber dinner, he, he was educator of the year, and his daughter was, I believe, the junior citizen of the year, the same year, to my memory. I think it was twenty eighteen, and I know she was sweet, maybe she was just a queen, but I, but, to my memory, she was citizen of the year that same year, that he was educator of the year. And yeah, he, it's a great lost star community, losing Chad, you know, being a teacher and a coach, and I know a lot of the kids, uh, are gonna, gonna miss him a lot, so. Any other, uh, council member reports? Oh, I have one, um, last week, I went to the chairman's barbecue at S K F, and that was, it was neat, uh, Buddy Mendez is the chairman, and he was there to talk to their employees, and they barbecued hamburgers for the employees, and, uh, Nathan Mag- Magzik was there, and you know, all the board members, and it was, it was a good little barbecue, and, you know, just to mingle with everybody there at S K F, and I really enjoyed that, so. Uh, that's all I have, um, seven eleven, city managers' report.
A couple of brief items, uh, the downtown parking lot, uh, project continues, uh, they will be paving, uh, the lot behind the library and the senior center, uh, tomorrow, um, so they'll be, um, uh, usable for the car show, which was the original plan, and then they will begin on the, the Smith Street Lot, uh, after the car show, in between the car show and, uh, Swedish Festival. And then, uh, the fiber optic broadband construction, uh, probably saw it at a couple of locations, so they're, uh, down by Lincoln School, and then also up by the high school, so those were, uh, coordinated locations this week, obviously because the schools are on spring break, so trying to get that work done, and avoid all the traffic, that's all I have. Two weeks.
Thank you, Alex. Future agenda items, we have none. Okay. The Cambridge City Council adjourns out of regular calendar into closed session, nine point one, conference with realist, real property negotiator. Yeah, thanks for coming, Lance.